Okay.
Pursuant to Governor Healey's March twenty ninth, two thousand twenty-three revised order suspending certain provisions in the open meeting law GL Chapter thirty-eight, Section eighteen, members of the Berkshire Hills Regional School District School Committee. What school committee will be conducted both in person and remote from March thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five? Agenda items listed to those reasonably anticipated by the chair. Not all items listed may in fact be discussed. Items not listed may be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by law. This meeting is being recorded by CTSB, the school committee reporter, Berkshire Ed, Berkshire Eagle, and other members of the public. Once transcribed and approved, minutes will be made public and posted to our website. So first, we will take a roll call vote because we have at least one member who's remote. So we'll vote. Hi, Anne Hutchinson.
Yep.
Bonnie isn't here. Sarah?
Here.
Bill Field. Appreciate that. Oh, this is Diane.
Yeah.
Perfect. Thank you. Rich is not here yet. Cory?
Hi.
And Steve Bailey. Minutes, minutes of November sixteenth, two thousand twenty-three. Do you have a motion? Motion?
Second.
So I've motioned to approve my bill and a second by bill. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote. Bill vote?
Hi.
Anne Hutchinson?
Yes.
Jason?
Hi.
Sir? Bill? Diane?
Yes.
Cory?
Yeah, yeah, sorry.
That's what I do. You are on time. And Steve, it's unanimous. And we'll turn it over to the superintendent for.
Okay, so thanks, everybody, for being here. We'll start with our roses and thorns. We could start with Katie and Mighty Broke and work our way up.
Should we shut this thing off?
Yeah.
Yes, please. And just for the record, Rich Mahoney is.
Let's see, we have parent-teacher conferences last night, a good turnout, although the Lost and Found did not diminish very much. We had one hundred twenty-nine entries for our high five redesign contest, so it's a tough decision, I'm sure. And probably our biggest problem of practice or thorn right now is intervention, exactly where to cut off the kiddos who will receive it and what to do with the kiddos who are left in the classroom but still need support. We're finding our limits of flexibility on stretching very far, so that's all.
Okay, great. Same question? Yeah.
Yeah.
Parent-teacher conferences. You said turnout is good.
Yes.
Part of these things, don't all parents come to all parent-teacher conferences, but I guess they don't.
Yeah, I mean, it's there's like handful probably from each classroom or each grade level that can't make it. With virtual, it's much better with the virtual option in case that's something that we're missing. And with translation too, that's really helped to get people in the doors because they're not afraid to be able to.
If a parent isn't there in person or virtually?
Yeah, we follow. Yeah, and hopefully get them to eventually.
Thanks.
Yeah.
I think we're gonna go in slightly reverse order. Miles had a little delay, so Christie, could you and your folks talk a little bit about what's going on in the high school? Well, you can stay there too. I mean, you could come up here or you could sit there, whatever.
Okay, sure.
Okay. Well, this Wednesday, we recently had, it was a half day, and we had a staff meeting with teachers and students. Each teacher could kind of go into which committee they just wanted to hear from. It was really productive. There was a lot of positive feedback from both teachers and students. Like, a lot of students get a feel like the adult partnership was kind of lacking and that these meetings didn't help kind of create a better relationship between them, which is really good. Oh, yeah, this this Friday is the winter concert. Jazz band orchestra, concert band and chorus, I believe, are gonna be performing at the high school at seven, which is very exciting. Oh, yes, many, many students are gonna be receiving their college letters this Friday if they decide to do early decisions. So there's been a lot of buzz and nervousness about that among the students. The boys and girls swim team had a meet against Taconic, I think, and they won, which was great. They're looking at a really strong team this season. Boys basketball has a home game tonight at seven thirty, I believe, and a lot of student bodies are excited about that.
Because?
Because one of our students, Khalil.
Khalil, correct.
Khalil, yeah, he's going to be making, I think, his thousand. He had a thousand points today for his high school career, and I think he's fourteen points away, I believe. So we're rooting for him. The girls' basketball also had a game, I believe, against I, Greylock, yes, Greylock. The JV girls had a really good game, and the varsity team had a really, really close game and ended up having to go overtime, but, you know, they lost, but it happens. The holiday stroll this previous weekend was really successful. A lot of school affiliated clubs were awarded a lot of money, which was really good. Musical auditions were this previous Monday and Tuesday, and a lot of students are just very excited for this year's production. And I believe that we also hosted a wrestling meet with Taconic.
Yes, and we can't announce the musical yet because we're still working on getting the rights, but we are very excited that Chris Tucci is joining as our musical director for this year.
And quite unusual to have a football coach be the musical director.
School musical.
May have many times, yeah.
I'll share just a couple of more things. As Lily already said, yesterday was our half day. We welcomed back in our partners from Jacob's Pillow to do a presentation. They will be doing the two-week residency for Curriculum in Motion for the first two weeks of February. We haven't had them since before COVID do the Curriculum in Motion project with us. Curriculum in Motion, for those of you who don't know, was launched in nineteen ninety-four in partnership with Jacob's Pillow at Monument. So we were the first site of this, and it expanded over the years. We have dancers who come and they are co-teachers with classroom teachers. They really do work in partnership and plan what the curriculum, what in the curriculum can be explored through motion with students in the classroom, and then they end with a presentation to each other for the for the students who participate in the various classrooms. So there's been examples where students have explored the digestive system and biology through motion and Shakespeare and drama or in an English class and all sorts of different kinds of examples in different curricular areas. So we're very excited to be having Jacob's call back. The one other piece of information I wanted to share is that our program officer from the Bar Foundation, Alan Gross, nominated Monument Mountain to be featured in the Canopy Project in two thousand twenty-four, which is a national data set of innovative schools. And we were nominated because of our work in youth and adult partnership, our proficiency work and the work we've been doing around leveling up. And so we'll be submitting information to them, and then when we are, when we get that publication, we will share it with all of you and the community, but we're very excited and proud of the work we can do.
It's a nice, like, national level recognition, so good, good, good thing.
Cool. Miles and the middle school folks.
Great. Most of you remember our student representative, Zaza Kern, from the last meeting when she was here. Our other student representative, Ruth Wheat, is here for the first time. And I should mention that I had nothing to do with choosing the student representatives. They were elected first to student council and then the student council met to choose representatives to the school committee, so.
Okay, so at the middle school tomorrow, we are having our winter formal dance. And then since next week is the last, not really full week until the winter vacation, we are having a spirit week where Monday is our pajama day, Tuesday is twin day, Wednesday is jersey day, and Thursday is ugly sweater day tradition. And we are also really starting to get into our musical at the middle school, so it's one.
So this year, our musical is Shrek the Musical, and and I think there are a lot of kids interested in that, that really a lot of people at our dance organization, that was the full cast. So we really had a lot of people there and the the kind of feeling in the school, the school's been really relaxed and it's been feeling really good. So I think.
Yeah. So we are, you know, we're moving along towards break, and there is a lot of excitement right now over the musical starting up. We are working through our next iteration of the Panorama Social Emotional Learning Survey. We've had a few technical glitches, but we hope to get that done before break comes. And we continue to revive the traditions that, you know, the pandemic interrupted. I will be hearing later this evening from some eighth-grade teachers reviving the eighth-grade trip. And we're not ready yet to come with a request to revive our nature's classroom tradition, but conversations have started as we're looking at that, and so.
There will be a long revolver when it comes.
Yes, I'm, I'm really excited, and you know, every, every time we do one of these things that the pandemic interrupted, it just feels so good to be getting back into what feels like the right groove and way to do things.
Great. And thanks.
So I'd like to move on now a little quickly through a number of proposals for your approval. The first one is memorandum of understanding for the pre-K teacher. This is in your packet. The quick summary is the, the pre-K that's at the high school, the Madison Nursery Program runs a whole day. And from a staffing perspective, we need one of the teachers to be there longer to meet the needs of the kids and to, to have adequate coverage. It's a working nursery school, and it's a laboratory for, for students to learn about early childhood education. So I'd love if somebody would, would make a motion to support this.
Make a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding? Got a second?
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none and saying none, roll call. Bill vote?
Hi.
Anne?
Yes.
Jason?
Hi.
Sarah?
Hi.
Bill Fields?
Yes.
Diane Singer?
Yes.
Cory?
Hi.
Rich?
Yes.
And yes, it's unanimous.
Okay, thank you for that. The next two, and I think we can do them together, there's a letter from the Boys and Girls Basketball Booster Clubs, each requesting an additional assistant coach. The, per our practice, the, the booster clubs requested through Carl, through Christie, to me. And, and my recommendation is that you support these.
Got a motion? I have a second.
Hi.
So I've got a motion, I do a vote, a second by Anne, discussion.
I make a motion to amend it to strike funded by Booster Club and state funded by the district.
You have a second? Oh, sorry, what was that?
To strike funded by the Booster Club and to substitute it with to be funded by the district.
Or lack of a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. So I'll start the discussion if for no other practical reason that we don't have it in our budget. That, that becomes a problem. And also, if we're going to do that, what I would love to see is our athletic director do a very extensive survey of what we really need to have successful programs and what is over the top, maybe okay to be funded by the Booster Club, but not necessary, necessary for teaching and necessary for safety and health before we go ahead and talk about something like this.
There's already a head coach and assistant coach for both sports, so this is a third coach?
Yeah.
Assistant coach meaning JV coach or are we talking assistant coach?
For each team.
Yeah.
On the money issue? My money issue, I think we have plenty of money, and I will be proven wrong if we don't have a tremendous amount dropping E D at the end of this year. And two is, I, I agree that it's not necessary, and I know our athletic director, everyone does a great job making sure everything's not necessary, but it's if the kids and the coaches think it would be a good thing and we have the money for it, I think we should pay for it. And third is, I just do not think that charitable entities, kids and parents should be paying for salaries of any people. If, if Booster Club money should, presumably if Coach Club had raised money, that's a different issue. But if they do, it should really be for extra things, not for salaries of anybody, so. But I've heard me these speeches a thousand times before. I'm surprised I even got a second.
And we respectfully disagree.
Yes, yeah. I think from, and I don't know the exact number off the top of my head, but, but in some years, we've had a significant amount of money drop into E and D. And the recent trend is that it's less. The total, this is why it's fun to sit next to Sharon, right? The, the total amount in E and D right now, so E and D's excess and efficiency, which is like the school district's equivalent of free cash is seven hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars. At one point, it was more than double that. So, and Christie might be able to speak to this, but, but I'm a I don't disagree with Rich's intent, but without knowing the whole scope of things, it is hard for me to recommend doing this on the fly without a chart in front of me that shows e- every coach, every assistant, every booster-funded one and, and what the implications are. Because we might be able to cover it for one season, but we might not be able to cover it for three seasons and, and it, it, it would be good to support this where it's most needed. And, and I go back to Steve's notion of, of mostly safety.
So. So we've discussed this every year since I've been principal, and this is now my fifth year. And my understanding from the school committee and the conversations Carl and I have had are that if the numbers of students participating and the participation needs to be supported by an assistant coach, that it cannot be run safely given the numbers of students, et cetera, et cetera, then we come to you and we ask for an assistant coach that the district will pay for. If we feel that the numbers and the safety are fine with what the district is paying for and a booster club wants an additional assistant that is to be paid, not volunteer, which is the other route that some teams will take, they will get a volunteer to support, then the booster clubs make this request and then we come to you on their behalf and ask you to approve it. So that's the, that is the frame that Carl and I have been using for these conversations. And I, I think we've improved our practice because I don't think.
I think you're, I think, I think you're doing it perfectly, but yeah, there's a frame that you've been charged to operate under. I disagree with the frame. That's, that's, that's what, that's what I'm saying.
So.
Our kid, our kids, our kids deserve the Cadillac plan in all their sports and all their activities because they're excellent, they just do a great job, and I think we can do more financially as a district to support instead of relying on community members and parents.
So, so part of it, I do agree that fundraising is overboard, but a couple of things, I think we're offering the Cadillac already, and I think adding this on.
It pours me, pours me, whatever you want to do.
Yeah, so, but the second part of this is, when you're opening this up to two teams, you're now opening up to how many ever teams we have in the whole high school. And for one, and I realize it's a different school, Miles made a very compelling argument for a position that we said we couldn't fund because it was in the middle of the year. So there are positions of educational needs that come up in the middle of the year and we haven't funded. And now we're gonna fund a extra coach. I, I just am very uncomfortable with that.
I, maybe I'm going out on a limb to recommend a potential compromise, but.
No, no, I have a strong motion. Vote, vote on the amendment that we can.
Yeah, okay. Anyone else want to speak? So the motion, the amendment before us is for the school district to fund this, not the booster clubs. So it's a roll call vote. Bill vote?
Hi.
Anne Hutchinson?
No.
Pete, Jason?
Hi.
Someone better be keeping track of this. I didn't know it was gonna be that close. Sarah?
No.
Bill?
Bill. The motion is to fund, have the district funded.
Right, the amendment.
So you're gonna get the vote again if you do your position.
No. Okay. Diane?
Yes.
Cory?
No.
Rich?
Yes.
And I vote no. So it fails five to four. Close motion.
Entertaining compromise.
So now we're back to, we're back to the original motion, which is a request by the two booster clubs. Any other discussion?
I just wondered from a timing perspective, in an ideal world, should this be coming to us sooner? Because we're already like four weeks into basketball season. I'm assuming there's actually a person there already that's expecting to be paid.
Yes. If I can tell you something about our our guidelines, that this has been an age-old problem. The guidelines are twenty years old. This has been a twenty-year problem. I'm not blaming anyone. Sometimes they're on time, sometimes they're not, and it's just the way it is. I mean, it's, I suppose there's probably a few more important things that they're doing, and you're absolutely right.
And one thing I would share, our last meeting was on November sixteenth, because of Thanksgiving and other things, the, the times between meetings is longer. That doesn't make up for it, but it adds to it.
I do agree, it doesn't make up.
Doesn't, doesn't it have to do with the numbers in a particular sport in a particular year?
No.
If the numbers are heavier, that's more. Even, even on the district-funded deployments, there is a history of lag.
Yeah, there's no doubt. It doesn't really have to do with that because the booster clubs always and I understand would like to have that extra coach there, no matter, I mean, they're assuming that we have a history of not having six kids on our basketball team, that we have a fairly full team, and they like to have that extra position, whether we have ten or twelve. So it really doesn't matter. They could, some, they could have done this in the summertime. They knew it was coming, but I understand. Okay, so I have a motion and I have a second. Bill vote?
Hi.
Anne?
Hi.
Jason?
Hi.
Sarah?
Hi.
Bill Fields?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Cory?
Hi.
Rich?
Hi.
And I. It passes unanimously.
Okay, so the, the next one, and I think this is why a number of eighth-grade teachers are here, is a proposal to do an eighth-grade trip to Philadelphia. And are they, are you guys speaking to it or, or do you just want me to speak to it? What, how do we want to play this? I'm happy to speak to it.
Yes, and then we can answer any questions.
Okay, so for the last several years, we've done an eighth-grade trip to Philadelphia for three days and two nights. It's, it's really quite wonderful. They would like your permission to approve it so they can start doing some fundraising around this. And, and the intent of the fundraising is to both reduce the cost for everyone, but particularly to provide supports for students or families with, with more limited means. I, I think it's neat. I, I support it. And, and over the years, we've done Boston, the Cape, Washington, and Philadelphia seems to be a nice compromise. Kids have access and frequency to both Boston and the Cape and, and typically would not otherwise go to Philadelphia. There's tons of history in Philadelphia, and it's fun.
No motion? You have a motion?
Motion, discussion approved.
Second.
So I'm motioning a second. Any questions, discussion, comments?
Are we approving the trip or the fundraising for the trip?
I think both.
Both.
Any other?
Yeah, this is how many, okay, so it's the eighth grade that we vote?
Yeah.
And, and so some of the kids who went last year will get to go again. That's totally separate from.
Yes, totally is separate.
And, and when would it happen?
It would happen in early June.
Early June?
Yeah.
So they will come back to school to share what they've learned with the younger grade?
No, the tradition of the school of this trip is it happens kind of in the early June period, celebrating them finishing up their trip year.
The tradition of this trip?
So when it was, so the previous iteration of this was the trip to Washington, D.C., and that happened again in kind of like the late May, early June period. So we scheduled it to be the same with that.
Or, or school April vacation. I mean, it hasn't always been June.
Yeah, but, but the school's still in session when they come back, so your question was.
By June seventh.
After morning.
Yeah.
And what's the total number? You're gonna take the whole eighth grade?
The whole eighth grade, so.
Yeah, I made it this way.
Okay.
I, I refresh my memory. When the Washington, D.C. Gettysburg trip, was that a full week or was that only a three-day? Three-day or. I mean, this seems perfect. Three days, two nights. Yeah. God bless for taking.
And I would assume the kids can't afford anything, will be helped out, will be some subsidy.
Yeah, the best of all fundraising.
Yeah, that's what I assume, but it's one of the sure.
And how much do you think it will cost for the kids who have been?
Around three fifty to four hundred per day.
Okay, any other questions? Roll call. Bill vote?
Hi.
Anne?
Hi.
Jason?
Hi.
Sarah?
Hi.
Bill?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Cory?
Hi.
Rich?
Hi.
And I, it's unanimous. Good luck.
Thank you for planning the trip. You're welcome to stay, but if you want to go home, feel free. Feel free as well.
Yeah.
It's been a long day.
We got it. Do you have a question?
Yeah, I do. I don't know if there's ever any class trips in high school, but the current ninth grade missed both nature's classroom and an eighth-grade trip. They haven't gone on any trips at all.
Ooh. So did the current seniors. The current seniors missed this trip.
The current seniors went to nature's classroom in fifth grade, didn't go to anything, and neither of the two.
They were supposed to go to Washington, and that got canceled.
Yes.
And then some of them lost their Spanish trip to Peru.
So give, give us a little time for Christie and I and her staff to chat about that, but we'd like to come back to a future meeting with some ideas on that.
Yeah. But to be clear, the kids in the ninth grade are not, have never been on a field trip.
Not any.
And not even a nature trip to Boston, not a nature trip to New York.
Right, we, we hear you loud and clear. I'm not ready to make the commitment, like, we're going to Mars, but we'll, we'll, we'll come up with a range of possibilities.
Mars rover.
Right, and see where it works. I know some people are, are a little anxious about our timing, and I've got a little bit of a long slideshow to share. So, so I want to move us right along. We have an agenda item on the preliminary budget context and process, so I just wanted to flag a couple of things. We've got a very strong finance committee. Rich will give an update on that later in the agenda. As it's our governor's second term, her budget comes out a, a little earlier than it did last year. We'll have a series of meetings in, in January as we refine the budget and then work towards the our own budget approval in, in March, and then the town meetings in, in April. um um our own budget approval in in March, and then the town meetings in in April, and in some cases, May. Okay, so that's that's where we're going. Um, um, so this is what you've all been waiting for. The personal electronics survey. So I'm gonna have the raw data uh in our uh packet on uh probably Monday. Uh, and I'll also have these slides there, and and what I wanna do is is present the slides. What I, before I start showing them, you get all the structure, and it is, tonight is not a night to talk policy, nor is it a night to dig into that. Tonight is a night to sort of hear secondhand in a summarized way what both uh students and then um uh parents and school staff, and the intersection of parents and school staff, said. Uh, and and when we look at the slides, I think you'll be amazed, because we don't see data sets like this that often. The other thing um that's that's a little hard, there are a couple of places where I imported things from other slides, so I have to read the numbers to you, and I'm sorry about that. I couldn't figure out how to uh change the thing within the imported slides, because the system sees it as a coherent image, and it doesn't let me mess around with it. Uh, so uh, so I'll share that, and then when I share um this presentation, I'll share my notes slides, which have the the numbers in it. Okay, so let me just pull it up. Um, and and we'll go through it. Um. Um, so here's our little personal electronic survey. Um, so there were, there were two surveys, and the N is the number of participants. Uh, we surveyed seventh to twelfth graders, and there were three hundred and fifty-three students. It's about a fifty-three percent rate, right? Like, uh statisticians and people that do this die for a fifty-two percent rate, right, return rate. It's great. And then we did families, staff families, and staff, and and a a large number of our colleagues also have kids in the school, so that's why they're in those groups. And and that was a across all the schools, five hundred and thirty-two. Um, um, it's about a fifty-six percent rate. It's hard to calculate that perfectly uh because there are people in in multiple groups. Uh, so here are some things that came up, um, and and you can read it, but I'll say it for people who are watching it. Uh, a really high insignificant response rate, so thank you to people who participated. Uh, students and families and staff have very uh or vastly different perspectives. Um, students largely favor cell phone use in school, and families and staff largely oppose cell phone use in school. Uh, like surprise, uh, um, all see some merit in use connected to safety emergencies. And and I can't totally tell if that's uh sincere or if that's sort of a a red herring. Um, many wonder about use during break times, right? So it's one thing to use a device in a classroom setting, uh and it's another thing to use a device um uh during lunch or 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 some other break period. Uh, and almost everybody wrestles with these fundamental notions, uh autonomy, responsibility, addiction, and and our capacity to monitor self uh or others, right? So those are the the big high level things. And again, like, it it's good you didn't hire me as a consultant to do this, because you knew, you knew this already. Um, so uh, take a look at this, right? So I tried to condense this in a way that that's fairly simple, and if you're colorblind, this is your nightmare. The darker green um are families and staff, and the lighter green are uh students. The the scales from one to five, and and the the scale on the left are are the percentages. Uh, families and staff at a very high percentage think cell phones are distracting, and students think almost the opposite, right? It's it's not distracting, right? So that's the first one. Um, the second one, do do these devices keep me from interacting positively with my peers? Like, students don't think that keeps them from positively interacting with their peers, and 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 staff do.
Yeah, um, one thing I was just gonna say, um, you know, it's kind of like expected that students are gonna be in favor of using cell phones like in the classroom, and I understand the um kind of suspicion on the side of like is is excuse like having like in case of an emergency, they would like to get in contact with their parents or not. I think it's, it's a valid concern. Last year, we did have like um.
The swatting thing.
Yeah, the swatting thing, which was like, a lot of students were like thankful to have their phones, right? I do think that it does take away from their learning. Like, I've had, I've had peers come up to me and being like, I was in a debate in class, and when it was time for my peer to listen to what I had to say, they went on their phone, they ignored what, like, what they were saying. And I do feel like it it takes away from both their learning, and it's, it's just distracting.
Yeah.
And I feel like there's some point where, yes, students should have a voice in what happens, like in in policies that are concerning them. But a lot of the times, I feel like they don't know what's best for themselves in that situation.
Yeah, no, thank you for sharing that, and we'll get to some of that in the subsequent.
I think we should record what she says in a minute.
No, that's what I was trying not to do. All right, we're gonna digest.
Digest some more.
Digest again. Uh, does it, this question I love, does it add to social drama? So again, families and staff, I think it does add to social drama, and 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 young people think largely the opposite. There's a small percentage, like six percent of of young people, like it does. Um, the the next one, is it important to to stay connected during emergencies? This is one of the few places where um uh students think it's much more important than than uh families do, but 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 there's a a higher overlap there than than the other ones. Um, so um recommendations during uh the day, right? And this is the thing I was talking about that's a little hard to see. So so the big red one, fifty-nine point eight, is is students would like to see uh them in their phones, and and then the the other two are are uh, I think the the next one is um um uh like open patches, like shoe trees in classrooms, a phone zone, and 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 then and then the last one is is lockers or or backpacks. Um, recommendations for for family and and staff during the day uh is the this blue one, families and staff uh would like to see it uh in um in 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 lockers. Then then a smaller percentage, the um, the red one is fourteen point seven, is uh i- i- in their, in their pockets. Um, uh, the orange one is phones kept in uh in the shoe trees or the cloth patches. Um, and and the green one would be phones to be kept in lock patches, right? So in interesting and sort of different thinking about this. Um, um, the, this one is uh students during breaks. Uh, and and a really overwhelming percentage of students think it's up to the students to decide how they wanna use them during uh lunch and and other times. Uh, and and the families and staff are really uh split on this with with essentially half thinking uh let the students do what they need to do, and and the other half saying no, right? Like lunch is a time to talk to your peers and interact. Um, I know I'm going uh quickly on this. This one's interesting. We didn't ask this of of the young people. Um, uh, but this was how much time do your children, uh, or students spend on technology at home? Uh, and a very small percentage spend not much time, and and in uh other percentages, or they're spending significantly more time. Right? Um, so I I went through, and this is always the daunting task, like, some of the best information you get are in open-ended responses, except that the person who's putting this together gets to read all of it, which is really fun, but then has to organize them, right? So these are some themes that emerged um from the students. The safety connection thing is important. Uh, they don't want something implemented uh uh all at once. They wanna build it and have it be delivered over time. Uh, there's a feeling among many students that it should be differentiated to individual students. So if somebody can manage keeping their phone in their pocket, uh, we should celebrate that. And if somebody else has to look at it every five minutes, then then they get the locking phone magnetic case and the, I don't know, and any number of other things. Uh, uh, there's a notion around regulate, but don't restrict. There's a a big conversation to have on what appropriate uses, uh, a a stress that that folks should uh teach responsibility. This one's a little provocative, but I thought to put it in, because it kept coming up. Uh, my mom texts me a lot, right? So uh, if 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 like, if if your mom's texting you about what you want for dinner, then like, maybe you're not really the problem. It's your mom that's the problem, but but if your mom's texting you about like uh, don't forget I'm picking up at two o'clock to get a filling done, that then it's probably reasonable. Uh, but it made, it made me laugh, and and I believe we should all think about it. Uh, a number of people expressed uh thanks for being heard or for hearing us. Uh, some people wanted to use it on breaks, and then the last one, which I thought was a, then sort of also funny one to end on, is having my phone in my hand makes me comfortable.
That's a real thing, huh?
Yeah, which is honest. Uh, so families and staff, I put it in two columns, just because they were a little longer. Um, uh, and and one of the fun things is when I do these surveys, uh, I I uh, if if people put their names, like, I know who they are, right? Uh, so so somebody that I know well uh said, share learning strategies around use and addictive and the harmful nature of tech and how to manage time. Uh, many teachers are almost universally teachers. Steve Fung's is distracting. They again reiterated the the safety connection. Uh, they spoke about their different needs in each school. And the conversation with elementary school is really different than the conversation with high school. Uh, again, parents and staff appreciated being asked for feedback. Uh, lots of folks talked about the impact on emotional health. Uh, this one is sort of the the parallel to mom texts me too much. Uh, which is also slightly provocative, is staff need to model behavior. So uh, kids are really good at calling this out in our our practices, right? And and are we doing what we were saying, asking them to do? Uh, uh, some people are are in this is staff, many people support a ban or locking up phones. Uh, some are interested in this phone zone, the hanging shoe trees. Uh, uh, focus on communication, and and also focus on bullying and other negative issues. We spend a lot of time uh chasing behaviors that are tied to uh social media. It's hard to know if that's tied to social media in school or social media outside of school, and and probably uh both. Uh, so next steps are to to um use this to inform the the development of policies, gather some feedback, discuss policy recommendations. This is really a function of the policy subcommittee, right? So uh, we'll generate some stuff that's building based, and then and then we'll we'll bring it to the policy subcommittee. Uh, we'll gather additional feedback, and and I think folks who completed the survey would like another round of input. Uh, uh, then we'll approve and implement policy. At one point, I said, I hope we get to this before the winter break. Uh, this is gonna take a little longer than than before. Yeah, right, twenty, twenty-four, something. So so that's where we are. Thank you for um um listening to that. Are there any, um, let me just get out of this. Are there any uh uh questions about the the data? Because I I really, that's something to talk about.
Yeah.
Any noticeable things uh if you split across grades?
Yeah, so i- i- it's it's funny and it's a little hard. I I didn't dig into that uh that much. The the student ones were just seven through uh uh twelfth graders. Uh, for some of the younger students, they wrote things like, I don't have a phone, but I'm answering as if I had a phone. Uh, which which was interesting. I I could do another uh uh cut of the data by that, but but nothing screamed out to me when when I looked at it.
The only other thing I was gonna say, not about that data in particular, but potentially grabbing another piece of data, and maybe we've missed the moment for it, but if if we're acknowledging and recognizing that this is an addiction. Um, sometimes the first step is recognizing you have a problem.
Yeah.
And so I think it would be an interesting line of questioning to go down to kind of help all of us, whether it's a student, a parent, a staff, see more clearly what roles these phones and the social media is playing in their lives.
Yeah, no, you should have made a separate conversation. Actually, I think it's a really good idea, so everybody can take like a little uh self-assessment, like the quiz that used to be in a magazine or something, right? And um and how how addicted are you to your phone? I'm completely addicted. I'm partially addicted. Uh, I don't, I don't care, but but if any of us had um um lost their phone, you know, they're really nuts, right?
Yeah, I I would have liked to have actually, not to make you more word free, but the differentiation between families and staff, um, they were all grouped in together, and I would see, like, to see during all those slides, we had students, um, three columns, students, families, and then staff. And staff with kids in the district, you could group them in into the family district, because they belong there. But I would, I would like to see if there's a difference between staff and family, by lumping them in together.
Yeah, I can do that. Um. Part of me would wanna count the if I do it, part of me would like to count the families and the staff with families in one group, and then count the staff separately. I I wanna be careful about like not not doubling people's say, but.
Well, you can just do three groups. You can do a family, one, staff with kids in it, and then just staff without the kids in it.
Yeah, yeah, but but I'll I'll do that. Okay, I'll 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 come back.
Thank you.
I'll come back with that.
Anyone else? Okay.
Thanks. Um, a quick update on on the MSBA, actually, Jason, do you wanna give people a little update about our our uh subcommittee meeting the other day?
Sure, we met, uh, was it yesterday? And um, with our um
Orange Project Manager.
Orange Project Managers assistants, there's been two architectural firms submitted um applications um for uh the new project, whether it's a new school, um, a addition or just a renovation. Um, both companies were really, really good. Our uh project managers both said the same thing, that we really can't go along either. So we had a fairly robust discussion. We really didn't um come down heavy on one or the other. We, the consensus was that both of them are are great companies, and um, you know, we do well with both. So um, we're gonna be, so again, the final vote, we have three votes, and MSBA has thirteen, I think. It's a total of sixteen, so they're gonna call the shots regardless. They're gonna meet January, I think, sixteenth, um, around there. They, the um MSBA with these two companies, we're gonna be in the meeting, and they're gonna present, uh, the two companies are gonna present to us and the MSBA, and after that, um, we'll uh hopefully have a a better um uh feel for which one of them suits us best. And um, and then the meeting two weeks after is when the final vote, I guess, probably a lot, January thirtieth. So um, the final vote, the thirteen MSBA members and the three from our district will vote on picking a firm to build the app or to research, build, and decide which of the three choices we wanna go with.
Great, thank, thank you very much. Great, thank, thank you very much.
Hey, oh, I'm sorry. And then the committee, so this, there's just a subcommittee of six of us uh picking this. The committee as a whole is gonna meet on the seventeenth. Um, and to discuss further and get everyone's input as, you know, we're gonna explain to them uh the two different um companies and have everyone's input there and I go forward.
And, and, and just to, one other thing, we have uh still some paper copies of the two proposals and. Um, that electronic copies of both. So if anybody uh who's not directly involved wants, wants to look at them, they're good. There, there's one section, section ten, that all, much of the rest of it is boilerplate and it's interesting, but section ten. Is very specific to our district. So if, if you just wanted to do a, a quick scan of it, reading both section tens. Uh, you could do. The other one is like uh examples of other projects and long lists of qualifications of, of people in every area under the sun.
And where is that to be found? Electronic?
Um. I don't know. I, 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 I'll, I'll send an email. It, yeah, see, it's in the.
Project site?
It's on the project site and a shared drive. Uh, and if we're, we're reaching out to somebody who designed just a discreet project site. Um, so, so hopefully I'll share a nice update on that. Um, that's it. Okay, let's go to subcommittee policy. Obviously, it's gonna be busy. That's not that. Buildings and grounds.
Has not that.
Uh, superintendent's evaluation.
Is not that.
Funding subcommittee, that's yours.
Yeah, we met and Peter kind of gave a basic update. You know, obviously we're one click behind. Usually there'd be a kind of like a draft preliminary, very preliminary budget numbers at this meeting. We're looking to do it at the next meeting in January. And meet at least once before then because there is kind of a lot of moving parts with this budget, um, including one that you folks previewed in October when we looked at the. Enrollment numbers and, you know, it's skewing towards, you know, uh, two towns. And so that kind of impacts how we deal with the, the whole assessment and a lot of other factors. So. It's gonna be, it's, it's, it's challenging areas in no more time. So, but we're still a lot years ahead of everybody in accounting, so I'm not really that concerned.
Uh, negotiations does not, not Peter, anything on the personnel department? Uh, uh, three new people or two new people in, in one different role. Uh, Kim Marino is working as a food service helper. Uh, at, at DuBois, we're both from her. Uh, uh, Miriam is, is the interim executive assistant to student services. She had been a para. And Chris Guarda, uh, my former neighbor and my mid-brad, um, is our new uh, uh, green asset. So welcome to all of that. Thank you. Any older new business? Public comment?
Hi, everyone. I know you're all anxious to get to that basketball game.
Yeah. Go, go ahead.
Okay, so I know that you're excited to watch Khalil do his amazing thing. Um. I, I really think we need to have space for a discussion around the incident that happened at the middle school today with um. That Peter sent a, a note about. I was happy to see Peter's letter. Um, I think it raises a lot of important. Community issues around how the police department is making decisions. When they're calling on a police to interfere with something that should be a school issue. Um, how, how we all talk about issues around banning books and. And responding kind of with knee-jerk reactions to things that seem to be coming from a place of fear. I think there's a, a really big discussion to be had here and I'm in communication with a lot of other parents that are extremely concerned. Possibly on the call, possibly carting kids around. It all kind of came out over the last few hours, but. I'm hopeful that we can have a discussion around it when you guys aren't feeling so pressed for time. Where we can talk about next steps in the community to make sure that it's handled more appropriately. Especially as the political season heats up and there's just lots of fear mongering happening on, on many levels. So I'm wondering. When is the best time to do that and how? How we can support the school district so that the community at large is following the existing procedures that sound like they're pretty good? But how, how do we, how do we do that? I don't wanna gloss over it as something that didn't, didn't happen.
Erica, I think the first thing to know, you understand, is this has all happened this week, so it wasn't on the agenda, so it wasn't appropriate or legal for us to discuss it. So we will try to, to find at some point in time to discuss this, probably at one of our January meetings, but we do appreciate your support.
Thank you.
Go on. Anyone else? Saying no one, by your name, this is consent. We are adjourned. Thank you very much, everyone.
Have a good night.
Thank you.